Okay, Mr. Scriven, we are live now. So you get to go.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, April 30th, 2020. We're meeting remotely using the Zoom platform. It is now seven o'clock. I'd like to remind everyone, the audio of this meeting is being broadcasted live via WHCA. And WHCA is also recording this meeting for future use if needed. I'd like to ask everyone to join me at a moment of silence. And I, maybe I throw out there, we could consider all those affected by COVID-19, both within our Whitman Hansen community and beyond. Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America.
States of America. The Republic of the United States, which stands nation under God.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our roll call. I'll call the names and you can answer in the affirmative. Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Lyneum?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. George?
Here.
Mr. Dyer? Matt Dyer? Oh, thank you. Ms. Kemet? Laura is here, I can see her, yep, thank you Laura. Mr. McCormick? I saw him, yeah.
Present.
Thank you. And Mr. Young?
Here.
Okay. And Mr. Simonak?
Here.
Mr. Ferro?
Here.
Let's see, Mr. Ferro, yeah. Mr. Stanbrook?
Here.
And Mr. Hayes? No, I don't see Mr. Hayes yet. But he's a non-voting member. I think we have another non-voting member on the call. I think I saw Mr. Small.
I'm here.
Yep.
I don't believe, make it this evening.
Thanks Fred. Well, I just, I'd like to say that we've, I just heard someone come in, is that Bob?
No, it's Laura, I think she dropped in his back.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, so I'd just like to say that I hear there's been some good, positive dialogue between the two towns. And we have Laura and Justin Evans. I'd open it up to them to maybe speak to some, you know, how that's going, how that's progressing. Would either one of you like to start?
Sure, I can start, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, thank you.
So I think where we're at, these, I want to preface this by saying, anything that is agreed upon needs to be brought back to the full board. And that Justin and I are just one member of our board. And of course, we'd want to also have the support of our finance committee as well. But one of the things that we're talking about is trying to structure, knowing that we really have only two paths right now before us. We can either have the statutory method, which we've discussed ad nauseam, and I really don't want to discuss any further. Or the regional agreement method, which is the per pupil method. And we know where everybody stands, and again, I don't want to circle the drain on that one. We've gone over it ad nauseam. But where we're at now is thinking that we may be able to find a path forward where we are going to split the difference between what each town would have paid under either method. So split the difference in, so that Hanson is not fully absorbing statutory and Whitman is not fully absorbing per pupil. Now, the complication with that is that, as I mentioned, we really currently only have two paths that we can take with where our regional agreement is now. One path is the per pupil, the other is the statutory, which the state has indicated is their preferred method. So what we have to do is first find out preliminarily whether each of our boards are interested in continuing that dialogue and pursuing it a bit further. I'm hopeful that, 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 that will happen and that our boards will support that. And if they do, then we need to find a way to back into that while simultaneously complying what is the current, with what the current arrangements and options are for us under the agreement. So hopefully that makes sense. No hard numbers, but I mean, if you, you know, if you run the numbers, you can kind of figure out what, what a 50-50 split would be of that difference. But it's, it's a step forward and, and, you know, in the continued talks that we, we are having. And I think it is, it is hopeful. But I do caution that it's very preliminary and that both of our boards need to support that.
Thank you Laura. Justin, you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, if I could. You know, as Laura said, this, this sort of splitting the difference has come up in a couple of school committee meetings. So we finally were able to, to, between us, put some numbers to it and see what that actually looks like. And, you know, I'd be comfortable bringing that back to my board if there's an understanding that this is a bridge to the statutory method, that the language in the original agreement that we're negotiating is statutory. Then I believe that with that understanding, Whitman would, at least the Board of Selectmen, would be willing to present that to town meeting this one year, understanding.
And you're not, and I'm sorry, but Justin, you're not saying that there couldn't be a transition to statutory. I don't think you're suggesting that, you know, if this concession is made, that then right out of the gate, it has to be statutory going forward. You're just saying move towards statutory.
I'd like to see the language in the regional agreement say statutory. And I think my board would support otherwise. And, you know, based on our conversation with Mars last week, working off of the old regional agreement, the, the most recently DESI-approved regional agreement, I don't think that amendment would take long to get approved. I don't plan on inserting an alternate method within the agreement that we're negotiating.
Okay. I, and I'm sorry that this is awkward, but I think that while I would appreciate the spirit of collegiality in potentially brokering that deal for this year, I think one of the things that I thought that I had heard in the many conversations that we've had is that there would be some transition to statutory. But I'm hearing you say something different now. I can certainly bring that back to my board, but I'm not sure if it will be met. I'm not sure how that will be, will go down, but I will, I will nevertheless try.
Okay, thank you Laura, and thank you Justin, both for your, your work on this. You know, I, this committee was established to work on the agreement itself. And because this particular issue that we're talking about, this compromise deals with this year's budget, I would entertain a motion to to adjourn and maybe reconvene in a few weeks to give the two towns a chance to get over the hump, so to speak, and, and work out these, these details. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Can I make a suggestion? Sorry, I think we have some old business we probably should clean up. So we should probably approve the minutes of the previous meeting if, if the group is so inclined to do so before we, before we go down the path of adjourning until.
With, so as I think and Chris is, the meeting minutes that we've had, and there's been some back and forth on them. I don't think they tain to this particular issue. And this is, this issue with the, with the, you know, compromise that we've been trying to, you know, help progress, that's really where we are, that's the main sticking point at this point. So I, I would prefer to hold off and, and get back into the nitty gritty language of our agreement at a later time. That's, that'd be my preference and we'll see what the board wants to do. I see Frank with a hand up.
As I understand it, the rules governing the open meeting law in minutes require that the minutes be viewed and adopted as soon as practical. And I don't really understand what impact having any other discussions will have over the discussions that have already occurred and been concluded. I think, I think it's important that the discussions and efforts that were made be documented in moving forward. So I would agree with Chris George that we probably should adopt the minutes for the previous two meetings that we've had.
Thanks Frank. Laura?
Yes, can, can you hear me? I'm never sure if my mute, my, my mic is muted. Yeah, I, I agree with, I, I understand where you're going. I think what you're saying, Chris, is you, you don't think that it's fruitful for us to discuss the regional agreement. And so that's one motion. But I think to Chris and Frank's point, let's clean up how, where we've come so far and agree that, that's what we've discussed and approve those minutes. And, you know, as amended by Mr. Young or whatever the, the motion may be. But I, I think we've got minutes that appear to be valid on their face. And let's just like get some closure on that. And then maybe you could take another motion to adjourn, you know, and, and we can discuss the, the regional agreement at a, a future date.
Sure. Okay, so I guess I could take a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes. Chris Howard?
There should be a motion to approve the meeting of the April 15th. I can't make that motion because I wasn't a member.
No, I'm sorry, I'm asking Chris Howard.
I was halfway there. I would make the motion to accept the revised draft of the April 15, the 20 meeting minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Chris George will second.
Thanks Chris. Okay, and I will do a roll call. On, let me see, go by.
Any, Chris, do you want to ask if there's any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, any discussion? Ken already had it, right? Any discussion on that, anyone?
I don't see any, Chris, I don't see any hands.
Neither do I. Okay, then we'll go down the list. Get to hear me. Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lyneum?
Abstained.
Non-voting.
Yep. He's voting, but he wasn't present in the first meeting.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you Bruce, yep.
What was the motion? I didn't, I, I, the motion came in gobbled, so I didn't hear it.
The motion was made to approve. Let me see, Michelle can read it back to us.
The minutes of April 15th.
Correct, yeah, I just.
As amended by Bruce.
Right.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Just four fifteen revised minutes.
Yeah, the four fifteen revised minutes. Okay, so starting again with Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Thanks Chris. Mr. Lyneum abstained, or right, Mr. Lyneum?
Correct.
Yep. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Thanks Chris. Mr. Dyer? Mr. Dyer?
I'll be abstaining if I'm absent.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Ms. Kemet?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McCormick? He votes yes with a thumbs up. That's allowed, right, Michelle?
No, it has to be a verbal roll call.
There you go, Mr. McCormick, yep.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Bruce Young?
I'm in favor.
Okay, and I will vote in favor as well. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the April 22nd?
Sommo.
Sommo, second.
Second, okay, we can take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Howard.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, just discussion, right.
I only have one question on these, I don't have multiple questions, just one. Okay. And that's on page, page four, actually. Third par, third paragraph down where it says Mars consultant, no, it says, Mr. Herman confirmed the Mars consultants will explore the voting requirements of the school committee vote on using, it should say whether it needs a majority vote or two-thirds vote of the committee. Because I never mentioned whether it was agreement or statutory. I just, I just wanted to know where that came from, or whether it required a two-thirds or a majority. So I really didn't say alternate or statutory there. That's the only correction I'm looking for.
So, well, I think the, Bruce, I, I know what you asked, but I think the consultant stated that you don't need a vote for statutory, that's the default. They stated that they would, they would explore the voting requirements of setting an alternate or agreement method vote.
That wasn't the question I asked him, but that's all I'm saying. Like, my, my question was, was clear, was, does any vote, whether, on, on which method, on which method to use, require a two-third?
Okay, so then we need, and then, is that, I, I can't see the minutes at, right now. Was that on the amended minutes, Bruce?
I'll just amend them to eliminate the words alternate or agreement method, that's all. Because that's not the question I asked him.
Right, so what's the, what are we voting on then? Because we've got, we've, we've got your, your minutes as were amended. But now with this addition, what should the vote be on the table? Should we take a vote to accept the minutes as most recently amended by Bruce verbally, but to be updated by Michelle?
No, we already, we already accepted those minutes. This is on, this is on the next set of minutes.
Oh, okay, you, you didn't give any, okay, okay.
Yeah, I guess, my only comment would be then, this should state that, that, that Mr. Young asked the question. This is, this is written as I believe the Mars consultant responded, not necessarily the question that Mr. Young asked.
So it wasn't, that wasn't.
That's my intent in that sentence.
Point, point of, of the motion.
Mr. Howard, go ahead please.
So we do have a motion that's been presented and duly seconded, correct?
Right, yep.
Bruce, are you, are you, are you suggesting an amendment?
That, I already made my, I already stated what my amendment was.
After the motion to accept the, and seconded.
We would have to amend the motion, I believe, Bruce.
I would like to amend the minutes to reflect that Mr. Young asked the question of what quantum of vote was required to set either statutory or agreement method.
By second.
Thank you Frank, and I have a second from Laura. Discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
Further discussion regarding the meeting minutes on page four. I draw your attention to the second sentence. The Mars consultants fielded a number of additional inquiries by the committee. So that's slightly vague and no, certainly understand the intent of the, trying to abbreviate the minutes as poss, as much as possible. However, I would like to insert there that Mr. Anderson, Mr. Hammond, and Mr. Reed, if they had reviewed the attachments that were provided to supplement his question, Mr. Reed replied that they did not. And I do think that's an important aspect of my question, that the consultants failed to review the supporting documents that I had submitted.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a suggestion that with multiple amendments, we perhaps table the minutes. Have, have anyone needing to make an amendment submitted to the secretary so it can be presented at our next meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, second. Michelle, you have that? I had a.
A point of order, we, Mr. Chair, we've had several motions and seconds without anything being actually revoked. I, I think this is the third motion and second we've had with nothing actually.
Yeah, that was actually not a motion, but a suggestion that we do that. And in order to do that, we perhaps need to withdraw our seconds and motions.
Exactly. Thank you Frank.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, I, I feel that there, at this point, there are only two amendments that were to consider. And then we could vote to approve the meeting minute. I don't think that's an inordinate amount of amendments to approve at this meeting. So, I mean, if there's a proposal to submit the revisions in advance, I'm fully concur with that recommendation. But the minutes that would be presented at a subsequent meeting would still be draft minutes, subject to amendments as they came fit by anybody on the committee.
Correct.
So, so all I'm suggesting is, we have two amendments on the table. We have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes. I would just move to either accept or not accept the two amendments. And then we could certainly vote to accept the meeting minutes and get this behind us. My suggestion only.
Well, the problem is, we haven't voted either motion yet. So the second motion is out there, but we still haven't addressed the first motion.
Yeah, I don't.
So. Whoever made the motions rescind their motions, I believe, and then make a new motion, right?
Withdraw.
Withdraw, sorry, withdraw.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I withdraw my motion to amend Mr. Young's comments.
So that's one motion that we had.
That's just, he took, he took the second away, I have to take the motion away.
Okay, can you do that please?
Yep.
Thank you. Are you good with that, Michelle?
Well, I thought Frank made the motion.
I did.
Oh, okay.
The weekend withdrew it.
All right. Okay, would anyone like to?
Mr. Anderson, what, what are we doing?
I would just like to approve the meeting minutes as amended, simply.
Perfect.
That's my motion.
I love it.
Okay, do I have, that's, that's a motion from you, Mr. Anderson?
That is correct, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Laura, Laura Kemet. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to approve meeting minutes from, I believe it was the 20 seconds, 22nd of April, as amended. Roll call vote, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lyneum?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kemet?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay, and I will vote in the affirmative as well. All right. So with that, as I stated before, well, I guess, where are we then with this? I understand, this committee, are we looking at this point to come to a consensus of how to proceed forward with the discussion of compromise?
I thought that you had suggested that we were going to adjourn. And then we would, I, I think the only thing that anybody took exception to was the, that we were not going to approve the minutes that we had of the meetings that we had already had.
That's correct.
Yep. Mr. Evans?
We, yeah, Laura and I both need to take this back to our respective boards, but I believe any budget would have to be assessed by the school committee first. So you would have to do the same as well with, with your committee. And then I would ask the, the town administrators and the superintendent to see if, if we proceed with something like this, determine a legal way of doing so.
Okay.
Yep.
I think it may be a little more complicated than that. The, the, the proposal tonight as, as presented was to split the assessment increase by the two towns. But in addition to that, to move in the subsequent year to a fully statutory method. And there seems to be some question as to whether that is the intent on both sides. So I think we really need to address the question a little more globally. Are we, I guess the question I would ask, are we prepared to move forward with a modified agreement for fiscal year 21 as part of a transition to be fully statutory in fiscal 22? Am I correct? That's the question we're asking Laura?
That is tied in with the question of whether my board and your board would support the splitting the difference. I think now, now that Justin has brought this up tonight, which I, and I apologize if I've misunderstood in past conversations, but it wasn't clear to me, I thought we were talking about a little bit more of a phased in approach. So yes, I believe that that is what Whitman is proposing. And that is what I will take back to my board and talk about.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you Laura. Mr. Anderson?
Um, yes, I'd just like a clarification. Selectmen Kemet mentioned the two paths forward. Could you just review what those two paths were?
No, I, no, not two paths, I'm sorry, I, what I was talking about really was, Mr. Anderson, was that right now, there's only two methods that we can use, statutory or the per pupil. This method that's on the table right now is sort of a hybrid method, if you will. I mean, we, we can get there using one of, method or the other by some other, you know, stabilization, some other, you know, line items and that type of thing. But in reality, the methodology, there is no hybrid 50-50 methodology because we haven't revised the regional agreement. And whatever methodology we adopt has to be codified either in the law or in our regional agreement, which has not happened yet. So I hope that clarifies what I was trying to say.
Yeah, so, so as I understand it, there are provisions within the law if a town feels that they are concerned that they're being required to pay an inordinate amount of their minimum required local contribution, it does fall into Title 12, Chapter 70, Section 6A, which allows a town to request that they reconsider the amount that they're being asked to pay. And none of that includes asking a neighboring town to pay the difference. So I'm just, I just want to clarify that there are more than two paths. And we could be talking about something that doesn't include any modification to statutory or to the agreement method. I mean, we could be talking about simply accepting the fact that statutory, there's, you know, there's, there's no coincidence that the word statute is in the word statutory, because it is the law. And, and, and I'm very, I guess you know that I'm very passionate about the fact that we need to address the bigger picture. And the, the bigger picture includes the recognition of what each town has been assessed in previous years. And I just want to take this opportunity just to go back to last week and a comment that was made that perhaps, you know, a six-year look back doesn't include something of an ebb and flow as Selectman Kemet suggested. Well, there's been additional supplemental research that goes back.
With all due respect, just point of order, there is no, there is no motion that is now presently discussed. Right, the question was whether or not we could adjourn.
Okay, I just, like I said, I apologize, but I just wanted to make sure that we're still considering the fact that we are considering using the statutory method this year. That's all, we simply wanted to make that statement. So I apologize for going on.
I guess my, through you, Mr. Chair.
One second, if I could. Chris Howard?
So I think what I would suggest is, I think, I think rather than delving into an ongoing discussion of some of the, where we are, I think, I think we're pretty, what I heard from Laura was something that was vicinity of something that I think could buy them. So what I would recommend at this point is we should adjourn, make the motion to adjourn, continue discussions, get back together in a few weeks. We nail this down, and at that point, we focus on building an agreement that would take us forward for FY '21 forward. So I would make the motion to adjourn.
This is Matt. I second.
Thank you, Matt. Discussion?
Motion is debatable.
What?
Motion to adjourn is not debatable.
Oh, thank you, Frank. All right, well, with that.
That part of Robert's rules?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn. I just want to thank you all for your time and.
Got to vote it.
You have to call for the vote, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Goodness. All right, we'll start with Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Kemet?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
No, and I will vote in the affirmative. Got that, Michelle? Okay, thank you all very much for your time, and we'll look forward to getting back together in a few weeks. Thank you.